All right, welcome to the regular school board meeting for August 26, 2025. Please stand for a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Are there any amendments or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, in the consent agenda, I need you to, in the personnel report, remove Deb Adams' bets from the personnel reports.
Have a request?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for the amendment of the personnel agenda. It's in favor, hand. Okay. Board recognition of students and staff.
All right, I'm going to ask Deb Adams and Linda Linwell to come forward. So Linda recently received her IASBO certification. There's a lot of work that goes into that, a lot of conferences she's attended and things she's had to do, so I wanted, maybe if you could just talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Linda endured sixty credit hours that she had to do over a two-year period, so it was quite an undertaking for her, and she learned a lot with her networking and everything, but I'll let her give you a little more detail.
I guess, coming from an accounting background, school finances like no other. There's a lot to learn. So the treasures workshop in particular was very beneficial, learning all the funds and appropriations, learning about bonds. But I think the biggest advantage is the networking. We, there are several other treasures there from all over Indiana. We feed off of each other, we exchange email addresses. There are oftentimes, if we're questioning something, we'll send an email chain and get the answers that way. So yeah, that's...
So now you're ready?
Ready to go?
Since you came from an accounting background, where'd you go to school?
IPFW.
Yeah. Well, we definitely appreciate the time and your commitment to educate yourself to improve and be a good steward of the financials of the district. So we're, I know that this isn't me, you're done. Sixty hours seems like a lot, but I think over the next how many years of your career, you're probably going to have a few more hours to worry about.
Definitely, yes.
So thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
So you have your minutes from the August 12th board meeting, then the personnel report. We have four resignations, Kylie Crude, special education teacher at OCEAN, effective nine-ten, Angela Dean, art club sponsor at OCEAN, and then Anna Whitstone, special education teacher, OCEAN effective eight. Twenty-one is when that was received, but the actual will be thirty days from that day in terms of the effective last day at OCEAN. And then Destiny Dahlberg, bus driver, effective on the 12th. Recommendations, Morgan Sheridan, food service at the high school, Amanda Brubaker, assistant swim coach at the high school, Ashley Patterson, bus driver, or bus aide, I'm sorry, bus aide, Kira Zatalak, girls head wrestling coach, Michael Zatalak, girls assistant wrestling coach, Kate Zatalak, girls assistant wrestling coach, see a pattern there, right? Kinsey Sims, substitute teacher, Elizabeth Landis, substitute teacher, Addison Hirely, substitute teacher. Then position change, we have Diane Smith from food service part-time to substitute.
I have a couple of questions on that, the bus driver resignation. In that letter, it was mentioned pay and benefit reduction, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, and so we've, so what we did, we moved from doing based on miles and hours and that sort of thing for all of our routes to just flat one-hundred-and-fifty-day and for double routes, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for, I should say, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars for double route and then one-hundred-and-twenty dollars for a single route. You know, on that particular pay, yeah, I mean, it's pretty negligible, but most of our drivers had pretty significant increases in pay. There were some as much as three or four thousand dollars more that they were making. We had three drivers that were decreases in pay, one of them is doing a route coordinator position for us, and so that's evening that out. I would entertain with the board, for the one that's remaining, that we write a difference for what they've, what they're missing in their, check for that, make it for that difference, because we made that same thing when we simplified the teacher salary schedule, we had a similar situation, we didn't want any teacher to go down, and so the year in that transition, they received a stipend for the difference in the amount, and I'd be fine to do that with our bus drivers as well, so.
The benefit comment was more of a concern I held.
Yes, we added benefits, so before, I think this goes back maybe two or three years ago, maybe just two years ago, but when I got here, they would not, the board did not give the same contribution to bus drivers as they did other staff members, because they were considered parts for health insurance, right? So they were considered part-time, and so we looked at bus drivers differently on that, and so we have the identical contribution for bus drivers today for health insurance than what we used to have, so it's been an increase on that. I don't know what other...
Because I took it, I guess I took it as a, it was a negative.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what that is.
I'm not sure either.
But I guess with the resignations, I know you had taken over the exit interview process with Deb, I think, do you sit in them, or Courtney?
Courtney does.
So what we took it over was, before it was just a survey that's...
A survey, yeah. In person.
We've done it in person now.
Yeah, and from my understanding, we asked the same five questions, just to keep it consistent.
Five or ten?
It's like ten questions.
Ten questions, yeah.
So my request, and I think, I'm happy to make it as a policy if we need to, because I don't know, the last time we got a report or an update on it, is just like a monthly report on, hey, these are exit interviews, and whoever's taking the notes, because I know Courtney probably does that, say, these are how they answered them, just because there are some teachers that say, I resign, or people that resign, no explanation, some provide an explanation, but I know sitting down and talking is important, so I don't know if you want us...
Absolutely.
To make it a policy?
No, yeah, I mean, you made a policy, because we've done that, Courtney's presented before with the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I just think we need to make it consistent, so it's...
Yeah.
Once a month, once a quarter, whatever, so I can email you if you want me to do that with Nick or something.
Yeah, we can, we can put that on there, absolutely.
I want to clarify too, you said a stipend, you know, to make up for where there was a shortfall, is that just for a year, or is that for a year?
Yeah, I mean, I would like us to take a look again, I mean, so we just had a conversation today, and I was at the bus stop for the bus drivers, we said publicly, and we said it to them, like, we want to be at the top of what we're paying bus drivers in the area. And I think we kind of had been there for a little while, I think somebody, you know, people are all jockeying for position for that, and we just wanted today, I think there isn't a neighboring district, a bigger district, that is paying more than we are, I'm fine with revisiting that, and even if we wanted to look at it this year for our bus drivers and make it retroactive, but again, all has to fit in within a budget, right, which is like Linda says, pretty complicated within a school, but this situation for the driver would be a check for eight-hundred and, I think, like ninety-three dollars, something like that is what she was, what the difference in her pay was, at least in terms of the base pay, right? And that's what we talked about, the base pay is really what you need to look at, because we're not going to organize a CTE program to increase bus driver pay, right? We're going to try to do a CTE programming so that our kids get as much programming, as efficient, efficiently as they can, not miss schedules, you know, their classes here at Norwell, and still get them there on time and do that efficiently, so as we do that efficiently, you might have less drivers that get to drive CTE, which is going to hurt their bottom line, but it's more efficient for kids and for our programming. So those were the only two, other than the one that was getting the stipend for coordinating, that went down in their amounts from, in terms of their base pay.
Which is just unfortunate, because we were told that, when we voted on it, that there wouldn't be anybody going down in pay.
Right, lots of paying, right, right. I mean, someone, someone up three thousand.
And also at the time, it was when we were talking about doing the K through 12 routes, and so that's what the one-fifty a day was, so it did seem a little more appealing to them, so I just want to make sure that we're doing right by them.
Right, right.
And what we're saying is actually what we're doing.
Right, so the conversation there, and that's where I think got a little bit confusing, is that we said, this is what it would be for a double route, is one-fifty, one-twenty for a single route, but if we went to K-12, we wouldn't reduce their pay in K-12, so you'd actually be driving less, and we'd be paying you the same amount, so the emphasis we were trying to make there was that we wouldn't lower pay to go to K-12, we'd act, which is what some people do when they go to K-12, we would actually keep the pay where it was at, and make it, instead of making thirty-some dollars an hour, you'd make seventy-five dollars an hour, right? And so, so it was really meant to be a very positive thing, but I think as it played out, and we kind of pulled the plug on K-12, because we didn't think we were ready, you know, feeling like a negative, and that's not what it was at at all, it was actually a positive, that we wouldn't reduce it, even though we're reducing work time, so.
So are you going to bring that recommendation?
For the, for the stipend, yeah, we're going to do that next meeting.
While we're on the buses, we, I see we hired a bus aide, and I, it was my understanding that we got rid of bus aides, so can you explain why?
So again, yeah, what we're trying to do is be more efficient with our, with our bus aides, and make sure that we're not constantly looking to try to fill the stage, and then kids that need bus aid on their bus, or without, because we couldn't scrounge around and find somebody. So as a rule, we have our teaching assistants covering, so they just stagger their day, so they may start the day on a bus, then be in the, be in the school as a teaching assistant, and then somebody else start their day a little bit later, then end the day on the bus. So we were able to do that, the one bus that has grown in numbers a little bit is Lori's Bus Seventeen, and she was also having trouble getting to OCEAN on time with how she was trying to meet her, her bus aide, so we have bus aides that get on at OCEAN, then we have a bus aide that rides with her the whole time, and then something, then one bus aide that gets on it at the middle school and high school, so we've added an aide in that situation, and also helped her to get to where she needs to get to on time. So I don't see that happening in any other venue, but for her, it really made sense that we have just an isolated bus aide for her route. And we didn't anticipate that coming, like, we thought that was going to work out.
Was there, where's the teaching assistant that was on that bus, are they still on that?
They're still on it, yeah.
So we have two people on that bus now?
Correct.
Last year, would we have only had a bus aide on that bus?
I'd have to look, I think we might have had two anyway, I don't remember, but again, it's changed because it's a different roster now, so it's, it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, I think we probably need to revisit the bus aide discussion. I understand the theory behind not having too many, but if it's going to smooth things out for the bus drivers, I, and make it so that they can make it to their stops, and they have the extra pair of hands or the extra pair of eyes, frankly, I think, I think that would probably sit well with the community, just move things over is my guess, so I think we need to keep having that discussion with the bus drivers at the very least, would be my thought.
All right.
And then the only other question that I have is, on this entire agenda, or personnel report, are all the jobs that we are hiring or voting on, do they have the proper certifications and documentation that they need in order to teach their current position?
So on the recommendation, no, yeah, so none of these are teaching positions, so yes.
Okay, because I went back through and looked at our hiring papers, and it might be something that we need Courtney to adjust, I saw that we have any certificates, and the people can add them, but there's not a spot for required ones.
Right, right, or if you're an emergency permit, I agree.
Yeah, I think we need to add that, and then I did see if there's, we do have probationary status boxes on there.
Those are for hourly employees, for probationary status.
So I think we need to adjust the hiring papers, and I think we need to work on a policy where we are made aware, if we are hiring someone that doesn't have the requisite teaching certificate, whatever, which we have done quite a bit of, and I completely understand why, but I think we should be made aware, so that when we get a call, it's, hey, you know, yes, this teacher does not have that certificate, here are the programs set in place to help them move forward, and so I think a timeline of when they get that thing, so it's something we can work on, Nick, on being told, and if it's just probably going to be a follow-up question to every time we do a personnel report, is, are they properly?
Well, I think, I think what we can do, and I thought about this after just some of the conversations we've had, because again, and I feel good about our hiring forms that we have now that we've never had before, right, so I think they're, they're better, but to add that on there, the certification in the places, just as an emergency permit, and then there's places in there for notes, we could very easily say the timeline on that, and we should do that, I agree with you.
Yes, I think we just, we just need to say it out loud, because like I said, I completely understand why, and it makes sense, but we just need to be made aware of that, in my opinion.
Yeah, we can do that. Are you ready? Well, I need, I need to do donations, yeah, it's all right. So then donations, we have a three-hundred-dollar donation from Six Mile Church for Lancaster Student Needs, to the middle school from Six Mile Church, two-hundred-dollar donation to assisted students in need, at the high school from Six Mile Church, a two-hundred-dollar donation to assist students in need, and then that's the consent agenda.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Put a motion and a second, all is in favor, right hand. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we do have Adam Heckbert, so Adam, I'll ask you to come up to the podium. I will say, just, just quick here, as he's coming up, I want to share with you is that I can, we can look at it later, I don't want to take time on our agenda, but we can definitely look at it later if you want, but ask parents, you know, when we're, when we're struggling with, with drivers right now, do you want us canceling routes, or do you want us to try to do these makeshift routes to try to cover it? And the last I've looked at, it's been since we were in our last meeting, but we have roughly, I think, one-hundred-and-eighty to two-hundred parents that have responded, about fifty-five percent are saying, just cancel the route, about forty-five percent are saying, you know, yeah, if you can make it work somehow to come get us, even if they're late, or even if they're getting dropped off late, so I'll keep everyone updated on that, we're kind of keeping status quo this year, running whatever we had planned this year, we'll take, or this week, we'll take through the end of the week, but that's good information to have, so.
Okay, just going to give an update on the middle school, it's time to ask for some issues that we have going on, I'm giving an update on all that. So in total, you guys have all been part of the project, we got one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand square feet of new, forty-one-thousand of renovated, and we've done about fifty-thousand square feet, and there was a lot of complex issues going on, so we had to keep the HVAC system running for the old building, we had to get the new one running, and then we had to tear the old one out, the new one in, same with the electrical system, so there was a lot of issues, not issues, but complex schedules, timelines, but overall, the project went better than I could have ever expected. I was, I've never been part of the owner portion of the construction project, I've always been part of the construction team, so it was nice for me to be part of the owner portion of it, and look at some of the behind-the-scenes stuff, but there was, like I said, Wagen and Schmidt, and all the subcontractors did a phenomenal job on my behalf, eliminating most of the issues. As a matter of fact, we've been doing the middle school project, started in 2020 with our planning, 2021 we started construction, and so we've been in construction for five years on those, and that includes the middle school, baseball, football, and OCEAN refresh, and Wagen and all of the subs have been part of all of those projects, and again, I can't express how good all of those went. So on the punch list, or just the middle school, we've had over six-hundred items on the punch list, and of those six-hundred items, we're down to probably eight that they're still currently working through, so it's been, and there's been some bigger issues, some smaller issues, I mean, it could be from touching a paint on the wall, a base coming off, to our bigger issue is the chiller, we've had three compressors that have been replaced in that, it's a two-sided chiller, one compressor on one side and one compressor on the other side. So we started it up in April of last year, both compressors went out because of the faulty BFD, so that wasn't really our fault, they replaced them, Kerry replaced them, and then just recently, we fired it all back up, it almost looks like a screen just like this that controls everything, went out, again, not our fault, Kerry replaced that, and then another compressor went out, so that's where a lot of the chiller issues, humidity issues came from, is the compressor's not working correctly, but now, they just got the other compressor on the run today, so now we're at a hundred percent on that. Again, there's been some heating and cooling issues, and again, it's no different than your guys' house, you know, you guys might have a three-thousand-square-foot house, and you walk into one room, and it's cold, you walk into another room, and it's hot, that's the same thing we're trying to do with two-hundred-thousand square feet. We have sixty-five individual heating units in all the classrooms, and five major ones that control everything, and so, once the control system gets tested, balances, and we get all of that underway, this shouldn't equal itself all over time. We had a lighting issue in the middle school gym, where we replaced the lights ourselves to LED lights probably six years ago, when they switched the power from the old to the new, it blew all the drivers out of the, the old ones that we just replaced, the mechanic or the electrical contractor ended up replacing the lights for free, so now we have all new lights again in the middle school gym. We had some condensate issues on, so on, on all of the sixty-five units, there's a condensate line that drains outside, there's been some issues with those getting plugged up, and it's typically a five-minute fix, you go in there and drain it out. We had one that overflowed, so the carpet got wet in a ten-by-ten area, but now we have alarms on all of those, so once that condensate flow gets up, so I'll shut the whole system down, it'll alert, alert us to where we go fix it. We had a waterline break in the family consumer science class, that was really, if you've seen a copper line, it comes in a ten-foot stick, and it broke right in the middle, so it really wasn't, it was just odd, I'm hoping that was just a bad batch of them, and we don't get any more of those. And then the humidity was the other issue, again, going back to the chiller, that caused most of the issues, and then there's, with our building management system, it all is controlled under one computer, we can see humidity levels, temperature readings, and all of that, they didn't have the programming right on that until the chiller got up and running, so now all of the humidity levels are, they should be between forty and sixty percent, and we now have alarms on those, if it goes above that, it'll alert us, and then there's a system, a building program, wrote, that if it goes below fifty-five percent, it will stop the dehumidification process, if it goes above sixty, then it'll alert us and start the dehumidification process. So those are really the bigger issues, like I said, there's, out of those big issues, there were six-hundred other ones, so I would say overall, they did a fantastic job, but couldn't ask for a better building.
I appreciate that. And you said you're down to what, about eight of them?
And one just got checked off, now that the chiller got fixed.
Seven?
Yeah.
Seven, thanks, Adam, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so just want to take you through, before we get into the hearings that we need to do tonight, just take you to the, the budget workshops, we're, we're in it now, right, things that we need to do, and so the September ninth is when we're going to, you know, you'd ask permission to advertise the budget, Form Three, review the previous budgets, tax rate comparisons, twenty-twenty-six budget estimates, advertise, and then you have your public hearing on the twenty-third, all goes well, we'd adopt that on the fourteenth, and then submit it to Gateway on the fifteenth. And again, we just do this every time, we overview, I know it's an old hat for a lot of people, but just to make sure that, you know, school financing, we have, you know, limited funds here, we have education fund, and that total revenue source is our basic tuition support, get that from the state based on our ADM count of our kids, and then you have operation debt service, local property tax, and you can see, you know, we, we talk all the time about how these work together, all these funds work together, but they can only be used for certain things, so education, we're using for building staff, teaching salaries, we're going to be talking about opening up the collective bargaining negotiations this year, that's your education fund, a hundred percent of that, and then, or a hundred percent of the teacher salaries come from that. Then operations, and we've got facilities, maintenance, central office, staff, bus, bus replacement, bus maintenance, then debt service of the projects that we've had going on, so I didn't have twenty-twenty-four, I just realized, didn't put that one on there. Referendum debt, local property tax, that was two thousand and twelve, and then rainy day, I just said indirectly, because as we're able to be more efficient with operation fund, then we can, we can put money into rainy day, and we've built that up from four-hundred-thousand in twenty-twenty when I got here, to now we're at almost one-point-five million, so we're trying to build that up, trying to make sure that we're being responsible as we're doing all these things, also have rainy day built up. That's just going through the workshop there, again, just that process, at this point, I don't know if you're ready to go ahead and open up the bond hearing.
The next item on the agenda is the, for the board to hold a preliminary hearing on the proposed project, if you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure that you have signed this sheet, which will include your address and your name. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there'll be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to five minutes, and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published and legally required, as legally required. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Mike Springer and Mr. Nick Hirsch to explain the purpose of the hearing.
I'm Nick Hirsch, pursuant to Indiana Code six-dash-one-point-one-twenty-dash-three-point-one, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt the resolution to primarily determine the issue bonds or in our lease for a project which has a total project cost and excess of serving thresholds. These public hearings and future consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this hearing, rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment regarding this project.
We'll now hear from Mike Springer about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project.
Okay, so as we look at this, we look at, we looked at two kind of reasons why we need to be focusing on this, here's an option for us, is operation fund relief in response to Senate Bill Act One, and again, not here to debate Senate Enrolled Act One, but the, the reality of it is that that's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar estimated tax revenue loss to the schools, and so it just means, you know, what are, what are the lever, what are the mechanisms that we're going to use to address that, that issue, that issue, so, and we have our operation fund growth cap, so that's, it's not like we can, we can, you know, gain more revenue with that. Eliminates the ability to reduce education fund transfers and impacts instructional staff salaries and programming, so when we start talking here later in the meeting, we're going to have our hearing for collective bargaining, one of the things, and again, just going back to financing, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but when, in '09, I believe, when it switched from general fund, and the different categories, operation fund, capital projects fund, bus replacement, all those were separate, and, and then, so you put all that into operation fund, and now in general, in general fund, you no longer could do utilities, custodial salaries, that sort of thing, that all went on operation, so when that happened, state legislation then gave us the authority to transfer funds from education fund to operation to offset the extra burden on operation, and so you have up until fifteen, up to fifteen percent to do that, we do that fifteen percent, so every year, we're transferring two-point-five million from education fund to operation, and so that's where we talk about these funds working together, so whereas we're not paying teacher salaries out of operation fund, or out of property tax revenue, if we're not having to transfer the full two-point-five, if we could just transfer, excuse me, transfer two million over, and you've got five-hundred-thousand you can put towards teacher salaries, that's how you're impacting education, so that's where we're talking about that operation fund relief, because we do have a push, not only do we personally want to have, you know, pay our teachers well and be very competitive with that, we also have some state requirements that we need to do with that, so that's one, and then two, looking at operational or improvement needs, you know, it is important to us, we've, we've made an investment on special education programming, and so we house at OCEAN, we have the intense intervention classroom and life skills classroom, intense intervention, we have kids in wheelchairs, and really do not have a great access to playground right now, and being able to enjoy that facility like, we'd like them to, and so that's an investment to figure out how we can make that playground more inclusive for our special needs kids. When we did the OCEAN refresh, we did not, at that time, do Lancaster furniture replacements, there were some discussions still happening with the staff on that, still remains a need, I mean, it's furniture, kids are able to sit on it, right, it's fine, it's not like it's, you can't use the furniture, but it is twenty-five years old, and so at some point, you're going to need to have replacements with that furniture and, and do some slight, you know, upgrade, the building looks great, it's built well, but you do have some, some, you know, minor just maintenance things that are going to come up there. In the OCEAN project, what we weren't able to do is, so part of the project would be that we could demo, so you have a boys', so in each, each pod, you have a boys restroom and a girls restroom, you have on each side, they're really small, and so what would help teachers, and they're also really old, I mean, they need to be rent- And so what would help teachers, and they're also really old, I mean, they need to be renovated a little bit. But the idea that teachers asked and we talked about was could we knock out the wall there and on one side of that hallway, you have one large female restroom and one large male restroom on the other side. It would help with that. It's, you know, obviously kids are using the restroom now and we're getting by with it. It would be more efficient for washing hands, you know, those things would be healthy and getting kids in and out of restrooms. And then Wi-Fi access point upgrades, we're still dealing with issues here and I think it's somewhat of a safety issue. Not only do you have cell phone coverage issues, but rather than doing cell boosters, talking with Byron, really if we just continue to upgrade and, and replace our Wi-Fi access, you could, you could access your phone through that. And so again, there's just places you go that we still have dead areas in our, in our school and I think that's probably not a good thing. You can see here and just in this room, but throughout the high school, we have floor, flooring coming up. The reason for that, back when they would have done the renovation project here, there's moisture in the, in the concrete and so they did the vapor barrier and did all that. That's over time deteriorating and now that you see that moisture coming up and, and the floors coming up. So something needs to be done with that. It's a pretty high price tag. Adam and I have talked about that and priced it out, but that's not a cheap replacement. At some point, that's going to need to be dealt with. And then just transportation needs are just ongoing. So bus replacement, we have pretty archaic camera system right now and we don't have a place where you can go, like if you have a, an IP system or a camera where you can go and download all your data at a local spot, that would be really good and you could keep that on the cloud. You know, now more than ever, it's really important that you have good surveillance systems for your kids and for your staff. So that's a need that we see coming up. Vehicle maintenance building and bus parking lot, right now all of our buses go home and our bus drivers manage that well, but those are some of our most expensive equipment that we're purchasing and they're in driveways of homes. And the other thing with that is if, you know, preventative maintenance, we spend a lot of money on maintenance costs with buses. If we have a spot where our buses are just at all the time and we can, and they're not being ran during the day, we can do some just upgrade and, and maintenance going on there. I think you'd see longevity with the, with our buses if we, we could up our game on our, our proactive maintenance. I do appreciate the, the relationship we have with Family Forward and, and if we had something like this, we could still work a situation with them where they're coming out and servicing there. But, so there's lots of things we could do with that. I think that's a, I think that's a need that we have. So we have, yeah, now we have Stifel here, I'll let them talk about.
All right. We'll now hear from Jim Elizondo with Stifel Financial about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to present the idea of seeking approval for up to three, 200, 2.5 million dollar projects, one each year of general obligation bonds. The idea of bringing it together as one approval, that is the starting point. Anytime we, if you do issue any bond issue under this approval, you will have to come back and conduct an additional hearing at each, at each and every issue, if, if and when you do that. Reason for this is with the Senate Enrolled Act impact as we're estimating for your district and all districts around the state as far as impact of your operations fund. I don't know that that's not, that's the end of it. And we don't know how good are, what are all of our estimates are as far as that goes. So the idea is to give you a tool that can be flexible as we move each year down the road through the new enroll, incorporation of the Senate Enrolled Act and its impacts, as well as if the legislature goes back and revisits because of perception of whether they really did what they wanted or the perception of how much it's impacted operation funds throughout all municipalities in Indiana to the negative. So starting at that point, we'll start with the graph here. This represents your outstanding debt service. Though, that is the levies, those are the levers required for all of your existing bond issues. If you go to the next slide, you'll see we then have pared that down to your exempt and non-exempt debt. And you'll see the first column represents this year's levy and then you'll see the large drop to next year. That affords the opportunity, if we go to the next slide, if we incorporate at least as a maximum about three 2.5 million dollar project bond issues, which with cost of issuance equals 7,965,004.3, you'll see the white green, the red and the yellow is an illustration of how you might, if you did three borrowings within this approval, how they might fit on an annual basis. All of those are provided within your existing levy. So we're projecting all this with no change to levy at all. So exactly what you're currently scheduled to budget for this year's debt service, we would incorporate this all within that existing levy and see no change to the levy. That said, tax rates are now becoming much more difficult to project because of the new Senate Enrolled Act's impact to assessed values. We know assessed values are going to go, the net assessed values are going to go down. While the gross assessed value will continue to grow at some level, the net assessed value will drop under Senate Enrolled Act. So we don't know where interest or where tax rates are going, so we're now focused on levy.
Can, can you just repeat that part again?
Okay.
For the last six years that I've been on the board, we've kept the tax rate the same, but because of that, and that act, it's now going to change the vernacular to a levy. So your tax rate will change and it may have nothing to do with anything we've ever done. So can you just explain that one more time?
Yep. No, that's exactly right. With the new Senate Enrolled Act, we are changing, they are changing the entire way we calculate net assessed value through your credits. They're removing all of your current credits and exemptions and rolling on a new exemption schedule that over through 2031 will gradually incrementally go up to where it will be a greater credit than we are currently seeing, but it is staggered. And what it does do is our gross assessed value, there is no change to the way your homes are going to be assessed or your businesses. There, there are some changes to other assessment parts, but the general gross assessment isn't changing. What's changing is the calculation of the net assessed value. And the new schedules will force down net assessed values on which tax rates are calculated. So if we have a set levy and our assessed value drops, to raise that levy, the assessed, the rate will have to go up. If your assessed value, that assessed value does grow through organic growth, then that change in rate may not be as dramatic. If assessed value drops more than, and then the credit taken off below that, then you will see a increase, a greater increase in rate. But again, because all of this is new, we don't know exactly where that's going to be, but I can tell you, every tax rate in Indiana is going up this next year due to this Enrolled Act and through 2031 gradually going up across the board. Every district is different based on your taxing, tax base. You know, some schools and municipalities may not see as much of a drop based on how you can share those changes among the retired tax base. Other districts are going to see it very dramatically because you don't have as big diversification among your tax base. So it is something that we now are trying to encourage our clients and municipalities to focus on levies, trying to get the word out. Again, we'll know much more next year, once we all see new tax bills and how it keeps coming and whether legislature messes some more. But we do think tax rates are going to go up, even if you don't change the amount of money you're asking for across the board.
Thanks.
If we move to the next slide, this is just a summary of what I talked about. If we lump 200, 2.5 million three times and then add cost of issuance. If we don't have to go to the bond markets, you don't have the cost of issuance, which as a reminder, cost of issuance are the costs to go to the bond markets. That's the underwriting fees, that's attorney's fees, that's title insurance, all the type of things that we have to go to the bond market. If you did have to go to the bond market, we could stop just at your project hard soft costs. But to roll all those in, I'm showing you a $7,965,000 maximum borrowing approval. Again, however you utilize that, whether that be in one, two or three different or four different tranches and whatever size, those then would come out of that approval and we would, we would have to come back for another public hearing to utilize each of those components. The next page.
So just to be clear on that, I want to make sure, so we each, so let's say board approves 2020, 2025 bond issuance. Next year, we're looking at another one. That still has to go through a board approval and a hearing type process where you get public input on that. We're not, it's not a blank check over the next three years for 700, $7,965.
Correct. Well, we're seeking tonight or presenting as, not seeking tonight, but presenting during this first hearing, is a preliminary approval so you can expedite into the future if you need to not start over with all of the hearing processes. You still, each time you have to issue, will require one to two hearings depending on what form borrowing takes. If you were to decide that you don't want to approve the maximum and you want to approve just a smaller piece, then next time you do it, you would just start over with this process, have these two hearings and then the following would be the additional hearings as still would be required of what we're talking about tonight. So it's not a one or, it's not an all or none, it's just a process of how you do it. It helps expedite as your needs arise, as we, and it's trying to stay nimble for Senate Enrolled Act. You know, maybe three or four years down the road, we're all used to what's happening and everything's pretty normal, you know, things made, you know, not need to be as flexible, but right now we're thinking that it doesn't hurt. But again, that's a board's decision and it's again, a board's decision on how you utilize it. This was simply presenting tonight at your first hearing, a maximum approval that could be used over a period of time. Following are some items that at the public hearing, we need to share with the public and have available at this and the second public hearing. And it's just a highlight, first, that 7,965,000 of maximum borrowing, that includes an estimated conservative estimate of 465,000 for cost of issuance. I've included in that the cost of issuance for doing three issues. To the extent you were to do one issue or two issues or four issues, that number will change. You know, fewer issues will be a little more efficient, more issues, you'll have some repetitive costs in there. That gives us an estimate of 7.5 million in project hard costs and soft construction costs. We're using an estimate of 2% to 6% interest rate. If we're in the market today for what we showed you there, a three or four year amortization with a larger portion in the first year, we're looking more in that 3% range. So we're again, using a very conservative estimate there for interest rates. We do have to show a maximum term. We show that at 15 years, however, each of those amortizations you saw had a four year estimate. Your debt is paying off quickly that we would anticipate paying off shortly, but again, when you do these hearings, we can always pare back, we can never change, we can never go longer, we can never go greater dollar value, we can't go a longer repayment term. So we are showing a maximum term of 15 years. We do show the total estimated interest cost at 1.733 million dollars. That is assuming the 6%. That again, is a worst case. Maximum annual payment of 3.5 million, that is filling that first gap. And then tax impact of 27.99 cents, that is the tax impact at today's assessed value, filling that gap in 2026. But the important number on there is that is a zero increase to your levy. So we're looking at no change to levy. There are two additional items that legislature requires that we share and we need to look at the school's maximum manual payments, existing and projected as a percent of your assessed value. That's kind of a debt to your assessed value. We're showing that to be 0.56%. That is in the very low range nationwide and a low range in Indiana. So as you compare with your peers in Indiana and nationwide. And then we also have to look at the debt, your local debt as well as an overlapping debt. So your debt, including anything in the county, township, city, fire, you know, everybody else's, and this is trying to give a broad review of what your debt capacity is per taxing, taxpayer or per assessed value. That comes in at 6.53%, which is a moderate number in Indiana and a low number nationwide. So those are the items we need to put forward. Tonight's hearing is purely for you to receive testimony. We're not, there'll be no asking for the board's acceptance or approval or anything. That will happen at the second hearing.
Two more, two more questions for everybody that's here and listening. With Senator Roll Act 1, it's great that our property taxes in theory are going down, but it's my understanding and that's my question for you is there were no guardrails put in place for other municipalities or, or taxing authorities, I guess, within our municipality, that they can't go after more money? They can't go, you know, raise money in the city or something like that that kind of offsets that? Is that correct?
Yes. So part of what your impact will be is in, income taxes have changed. You as a school district or individuals receive property tax relief credits. Those are being eliminated and that is one of the burdens that you're seeing, projected in your operations fund that will flat out be removed. Other municipalities can incorporate an income tax. You have not been, you're the only municipality level that has not been given that opportunity. So they have expanded the income tax for all other municipalities. School corporations have no access to that. You will have the, you also have the new credit that is coming. There is a new credit of 10% or up to $300 per individual taxpayer. That is just like a surger breaker. That is coming right off your bill, so it is a tax relief, but the problem is there's no way that then underfunds every municipality, including you. And that's that hits to that $800,000 shortfall that we're going to see in this first year, plus or minus, we don't know exactly, but based on estimates. So yes, you, there are, there are some avenues out there. You're limited to your operation fund tax levy and the debt service fund tax levy. And this process is a way to give you flexibility to provide operation relief through debt service if you choose to follow that.
And then the last one, or my last one, I guess, is, is the income, or not income tax, the sales tax has gone away or is going away this year and for, no, the sales, the 300, what was it, 375 grand?
Local.
That's one.
Yeah.
That one. It's going away for us. And I think I asked your colleague at that point, oh, sweet. So we, that's not going to be made up somewhere else. There's, that's not.
As of right now, that is completely removed from the table and gone.
Okay. And it, 375,000 is what I recall.
Right.
Yeah.
And that, where, where did that go?
So we, we had fluctuated, mostly we were putting it in operation, but at one point we were doing education just because we were trying to be symmetry rights with income tax based things were going to education and all property taxes going to operation. But with the way operation had been hit the last few years, we were putting it all there.
Yeah. Now, that was part of that removal. They changed the income tax structure, but then they also completely removed any of that property tax relief credit or that prior shift of the income tax with municipalities or with schools.
All right. We will now open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please step to the podium and sign in on the sheet, which will be located in the podium. I'm going to move down the list first and anybody who wishes to speak after those who signed up, we will move the signup sheet so that you can. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name, your address, limit your comments to the proposed project and financing, and please keep your comments to five minutes to avoid being. to avoid being repetitive, and be, avoid being repetitive if possible. So I'll be keeping a timer and let you know when your five minutes is up, so that we can make sure that we hear from everybody. All right. First starts with A.J. Springer. Did you want to speak?
Just want to make it, with other government entities, municipalities, municipalities, with Jefferson Township, I'm going to be hit hard, so just, any bonds we do, it's going to affect everybody's taxpayer rate. You guys have heard, Jefferson Township has a lot of issues with tax rates. Well, a lot of it comes from the school system and not Jefferson Township, so just to make sure, if we're doing a bond, or whatever you're going to do, you gotta make sure to think about the other entities within the school district that you guys are going to pay. Our tax rate's going to go up, that's going to affect me too, my tax rates really go up, that's associated with Jefferson Township and everything like that. So I'm constantly fighting that battle too, like, hey, I'm waiting out here in low level, I'm, my budget is under three hundred thousand, but it's a constant battle for me to fight that, to try to even get up to that level. I got fired apart for the thing about, and that's constantly changing. So whatever you guys do, does affect us, the guys too.
Thank you.
My name's Roger Thornton, address thirteen thirty-five Hollendale Drive. Couple of comments before I begin my prepared remarks. Number one, I've known Mr. Alizondo for a lot of years. I met him when he was young, I wasn't, but I commend you for having his expertise. Secondly, I'd like to see you add something, if you could, to the equipment, and that would be a P A system prepared. As a guy who gets, less than, you know, the older idea, I struggle to hear you, and I really want to, so please consider that. Board of Trustees and Superintendent Springer, thank you for your service to Norwell Schools and its students. Thanks also for the opportunity to share my perspective regarding the potential bond issue. I urge you to resist the idea of a large, use undefined bond issue. My reasons are several. Number one, you as a board have enjoyed the trust of the taxpaying community. Doesn't mean that you don't grumble on occasion, but you enjoy that trust. Marge and I have supported the projects as you have issued defined and specific purposes from the middle school, and the baseball and football fields, and beyond. You have completed what you said you would. The increased taxes we and the entire community have paid have been significant. Some of that increase has been caused by your expenditures. However, the majority has been caused by tax shifting, caused by the present state-mandated assessment system, and shifting of tax to homeowners. Homeowners who are paying increased taxes are paying increased attention to what prompts those taxes. Perspective, I'm not sure we always think about. In two thousand and four, my federal tax returns showed that I paid sixty-three point five percent of total taxes to the federal government, twenty-one point four percent to the state of Indiana, and fifteen point one percent in property taxes to support local services, including school transportation, debt service, and operation. Note that though the smallest of the three by far, the method of collection of those taxes is unique. If we all had to write checks for our federal, state, and property taxes in May and November, county and city taxes, school taxes would be minimal in comparison. The objection we feel at times has to do with how these taxes are paid, not their necessary amount. If they were the amount, we'd be having hearings with federal officials, I think, and some state officials that we seldom see. Regardless of that, undue debt repayment costs will remain taxes of concern for taxpayers. undefined uses of levied tax money, and undefined use bond issues make no sense to me, and are fertile ground for rumor and disparity. Tax monies belong to the taxpayer until levied for an approved use. Who will be in your offices two, three, or four years from now? And I make that as an objective statement, not directed at anyone. I hope you are. But what if you aren't? Will those people's priorities be the same as yours? Would we all be in support of their projects? A large undefined purpose for indebtedness makes no sense. I urge you not to do it, and I want to add one more comment. If I were a superintendent or a board member in Norwell, one of my main interests would be in trying to keep the tax rate flat, the tax levy flat. I think that's what Senate Bill One was trying to change. It's trying to make the public aware when you, the cost when you issue a new bond issue, because I think that Senate Bill One requires a one-year layoff once a bond issue expires. I understand that's troubling, but I urge you to continue to address needed and defined projects. Those statutes are continuously increasing competition between and among public and private schools. Norwell Schools' competition for students is both constant and of great impact, both positive and negative. Am I timed up?
Yep.
Couple additional quick comments, if I may. The, the challenge of meeting your challenges with salaries and so on is complicated, I think, by the actions of the state. I read the Journal Gazette today, four hundred and some million going to show choice vouchers that in my opinion ought to be going to the public school. If we're ever going to have a referendum on anything in Indiana, I wish we would have it on whether the public approves of this use of voucher money, or if they'd like to see the public money that we all pay go to public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. Thanks, Roger.
My name's Mark Miller, five eighty-five Cricket Street, Portland. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I want you to know, I too appreciate your willingness to serve. I think this is one of the toughest, most difficult public positions to serve on board and be a, be a school superintendent. The challenges brought by open enrollment and vouchers, and the complexities of state funding, to us, it's tough. Very briefly, two things specific to the project. I don't think it's too much to ask that rather than maximize what you can get from us, and then figure out what your needs are later, I think instead of that, to identify and justify specific projects for your capital needs, and then get the estimates, and then issue debt bonds for that project. I just don't think that's too much to ask. Secondly, I cannot strongly enough express my concern and opposition to utilizing long-term debt for operations. I just think that's a dangerous practice, it's a spiral, can only lead to bad things. No business organization does this, and if they do, it usually doesn't end well. I would hope that homeowners wouldn't take out a home and equity loan to pay the utility bills, or to be able to eat out more often. We all have to live with our means. I appreciated Mr. Alizondo's presentation. I mean, it just further talks about the, and exemplifies the complexity of what you're dealing with, what all taxing units are dealing with, and I have great appreciation for that, and what limitations this is putting you guys under, but you also got to realize that taxpayers have limitations too. And I, and I know you know that, but I just think it needs to be voiced. If I, if I get out of bounds here, Chad, just let me know, but it's not really specific to this project, but it's something I've just learned, just kind of came to full realization in this past week. The referendum that is added to our tax bill right now, that, that is from two thousand and twelve, the fifteen million dollars to renovate the high school, is that correct? Is that initial bond still being paid for, or, or, we're still paying off that bond?
Yes.
Has any portions of that been renewed? I was told that last year's three point three million dollars is a renewal of that debt bond. Which one?
Was it renewed? Are you talking about refinancing, or are you talking, refinanced?
What does that mean by it's refinanced? It was, it was, that bond was renewed in order to finance the new projects?
No.
Yeah. To reduce the rate?
Right. Jim, you want to talk about it?
Yeah.
So refinancing, just like when we refinance your home, your home mortgage, it was just, we resold it at lower interest rates for the same term?
Just like a refinance?
Yeah, exactly. So we just lowered the payments to provide-
Again, I, I appreciate that. You know, I, I've been trying to figure out property taxes through several years, and, and it's complicated.
Yeah.
And I didn't have an understanding of that, so thank you. I think that's it. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Rob? Spark?
My name's Bob Bark, I'm living in Dale, just across the street here, and I want to address the bond issue, that I don't like to see it used as an open checkbook, or as a money tree, where you go grab money off of who you need. I like to see you define a project and ask for the bond. That's more, I think, responsible to the public. And I think, I think you've done a swell job on the middle school and all the other projects here, but keep the projects limited to what we really need and not want. I believe that what you've done with, towards some of these classes that we've had, academics and trade schools and special needs, I think is very important. That's where the money needs to go, and keep your focus where it should be. But I do thank you for your service and be responsible to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and your interest in the project and the future of our community. Please note that this is just the first step of a legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing, rather, this hearing is solely to hear your public comment. The board will continue to work with administration and professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to opening the collective bargaining hearing.
Yes, I just want to go over the timeline for collective bargaining. So we're required, prior to formal bargaining, to have this hearing and collect public testimony. Collective bargaining can start, formal bargaining can start on September fifteenth. We can have informal discussion, but formal bargaining window begins on the fifteenth. October first, school employee organization affidavit is due to the gateway, and that's when we get our fall A D M count. So we find out how many students do we have enrolled that are going to count towards revenue for our education fund. Thirty days after the fall I D M, I D E certification and education fund revenue, of education fund revenue, tentative agreement for the school board, from the school board, for our collective bargaining, and that has to be at least seventy-two hours after the tentative agreement was reached. So it can be longer than that, but it has to be at least seventy-two hours after. And ratification of the meeting, ratification meeting with public comment needs to be at least seventy-two hours after that T A meeting. And then, on November fifteenth, we can ratify the C B A, and that's due to gateway at that time. And bargaining status Form One is also due to gateway. So that's the timeline for collective bargaining. Just wanted to highlight some things that have happened here over the last, you know, five years going in, now six years. Average teacher salary at Norwell in two thousand and twenty was fifty-three thousand five nineteen. Today, the average salary is sixty thousand eight fifty-four. Starting teacher pay was thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eight, and today it's forty-six thousand, while overall teacher retention rate in Indiana is approximately seventy-seven percent. Teacher retention rate at Norwell in the past two years has been eighty-nine ninety-two percent. Norwell has over twenty teachers with, has hired over twenty teachers with ten or more years' experience since two thousand and twenty. A lot of that happens within our C T E programming, dual credit or hard-to-fill positions, but they have also been at the elementary level as well. Since two thousand and twenty, Norwell has added forty-eight dual-credit classes for career and technical education programs, expanded pre-K programming, and added special education programming. Class sizes averages for grades K three at elementary level currently are between fifteen and twenty-one students per class. Those are small numbers. I was at, with the kindergarten class today and talked about how nice it is to have their, their class sizes they have right now, and, and working with kids and establishing routines.
Can I ask, just because both of you are there, is that, I don't remember what, what, it was quite a bit higher than that, right?
For K three?
Yeah.
Yeah. There were three years that were, I would say, a little bit over that twenty-one mark.
Yes, that's where we are now, yeah. And then Norwell added high ability coordinator, point five position to ensure high ability. Students' needs are met. Norwell added English language learner's coordinator, point five for our E L L students, and then added an education diagnostician, point five position to assess the students for academic behavioral difficulties, and helps determine their eligibility for special education services. Wanted to list all that, because that's all that goes into, you know, conversations when we're looking at what can we do with teacher salaries, because that's all, program all comes out of just that one fund, education fund. Then just wanted to go over, we've talked about this before in budget meetings, but one of the ways that we measure the health and, of a school district, financial health, we get this every year from the distressed unit board. And so the education fund, you want to try to keep that percentage, really don't want to go lower than ten percent. And so this shows what's the fund balance as a percent of expenditures. You can see back in two thousand and twenty, it was fifteen point six percent. That has grown through more money being given by the state to us, so we appreciate that. And, but we've also, with that money, like, we want to pay that down. That's not, we don't just want those fund balance percentages to just keep going up, we need to give that back to teachers in our salaries, and instructional staff in our salaries. Then just wanted to kind of look at our last quarterly report, just to see how we have been paying down our education fund, and just looking at, again, going back to what we talked about in the, in the bond hearing, you know, what we really want to try to do, if we're going to look at teacher increases, if we're not doing anything else to supplement, you know, our revenue, we can do, we can do increases in teacher salaries if we're not transferring two point five million over from education to operations, but as you can see here, there's just a challenge in doing that. At some point, you know, operation fund is, just can't take, you know, any more hit. So it's that balance between the two that we struggle with, and not just Norwell, but every school district. So, just wanted to go over that in terms of, that's what we're looking at as we're going into the, to the collective bargaining sessions.
All right. Moving on to discussion items.
Well, I don't, if you want public, public testimony, if anyone wants to.
Is there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to the, opening the collective All right, we will close the hearing and move on to discussion items, the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven calendar draft.
Yeah, so I'm going to kick this off to Anna here in a second. I just do want to say something, you can go ahead. Decision, decision we made last year for the calendar, we just kept feeling like, you just keep creeping back into families' lives in the summer, and we really wanted to make a concerted effort to get out of July and make sure we're not starting school until August. And so we talked with our area, other area superintendents and school districts, and got everyone to the same page, and we do move, did move it back, and I think that was pretty presently, pleasantly received. I think people liked having that extra week to start school. So, Anna can talk to you about what we're looking at for possible draft for next year?
Thank you. What we did is we took the calendar from this year and just made it exactly the same, moved it one day. So, that's because of the year, so everything was just moved by one day, and just kind of went through that later start time, so- So it was appreciated and I've heard nothing but great things like, thank goodness we're not starting on the 5th or the 4th or, it seems like July is when teachers, when teachers have to go back. So that was much appreciated. It kind of gave us some leaving room to get ready and the teachers are shaking their heads, yes, out here, thank you so much. So that was appreciated. So we kept up the same. We have two teacher days to begin with. That gives teachers two days to get ready. And then we also left the one day at the end for the teachers to kind of wrap things up. So in the middle, we left most everything exactly the same. I did make a mistake on your first draft and I fixed it. That's just user error, so that was my fault right there. I left last year's dates in there and I forgot and I just didn't fix it right there. The calendar was right, but the little explanation wasn't. So I did fix it. October 19th through the 23rd is fall break. And when we asked teachers what they wanted, and this is of course what I would want, I would want to start after Labor Day. I want two weeks' fall break. I want three weeks', you know, Christmas break. I want, you know, but we have to have 180 days. So what we did is we made sure that we did have 180 days. So the one week for fall break was, was a big popular, yes, we would like to keep that. So we did. Also then, if you go on through, it was a three days before, or three day Thanksgiving break, so we kept three days, which is kind of important as well, you know, having a ready for that. The Christmas break is exactly the same and it is two week Christmas break as well. After we get back from Christmas break, we have the 4th, which this year is going to be the 5th. And if you look at the amount of teacher days compared to what it was two years ago, there was 187 teacher days. So there were two days built in for parent teacher conferences, two full days built in for parent teacher conferences. Some at the secondary level are saying, wow, that's a lot, you know, for parent teacher conferences. And we reached that. At the elementary level, they said, yeah, we like parent teacher conferences, so we kept that and kind of met in the middle. So the principals talked and they would like to use January the 4th that day as your parent teacher conferences. I am not saying parent teacher conferences are on January the 4th. I'm saying that that day that is built into the calendar, the teachers will take two half days then to have parent teacher conferences in the PM, so after their contracted work hours. So instead of 187 days, the teachers per DM rate just went up three days. So you're now only working 184 days. No, no teachers lost any money. Everything was the same. It just less days to work. So, and that was something we did last year and we're just continuing it for this year. This year as well, with the way everything felt, with the way everything fell the day before spring break, we added the 19th. A lot of people like to take off the day before the weekend of spring break starting, so we added that back in just because it just makes it easier. And now people will only have to, you know, they'll have to take off that day and then you'll have the weekend, the full next week and the weekend, and then come back. For April, which is going to last forever, just let you all know that April will be the longest month besides January, okay? Just because there's no breaks in April. Good Friday, the reason why we did that, fell during spring break. So because Good Friday was a day that we have off and Good Friday fell during spring break, that's kind of why we talked to add the day before spring break to make up for it. It was just an extra day, so it seems like a good place to put it. We do end this year before Memorial Day this next coming year because it falls on the 31st, so we kind of got lucky this year. So it was kind of a win-win calendar because our last student day will be May the 27th and our last teacher day will be, or May the 26th and our last teacher day may the 27th in the year 2027. Any questions?
All right. Any questions to the board? Any discussion?
Yeah, it is kind of nice that Good Friday 2027 falls during spring break instead of this next year it falls. We had to take that Friday away, so.
Yes, yeah. It worked out really nice this next year.
So people can leave on Thursday. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in regards to the proposed calendar? We are not making a decision this evening, so this is our opportunity to hear any discussion and it will come back as a potential item in our next meeting for approval.
All right. Thank you very much. Next discussion item is the 25-26 Alive and Well contract.
Yes, we do have Kelly Diddy here. I don't know if you need, we've been working with Alive and Well for a while now, but she's here in case you have questions that you want to ask Kelly.
I think I saw the stuff went out to the parents recently.
We sure did. I'll make notes up for Wendy too, in case there's any other questions. Yeah, so our contract, actually I confirmed with Wendy today, started back in 2008 and didn't realize that had been that long. So she started when Holly Morgan was actually a fall teacher at the middle school, so that was an interesting fact to me. I had missed that. So, and just slowly expanded since that point on. So now we are in fifth grade, all of middle school for six lessons and then our body safety lessons, six to 12, and then high school health and high school, one bottom Reinhardt classes as well for six months, so.
And then just to clarify, again, I think parents received an email last week from Alive and Well, is that correct?
So for middle school, they would have received something for six, eight that includes all of those lessons, including body safety. Body safety went out for high school this week as well.
And if they have any questions?
They can call me, they can call any of the school counselors. All of Alive and Well is applying, which is really great. Wendy Bailey's always open for questions, so they make sure that they're following up all state mandates, all state guidelines. That good stuff.
And people can opt out if they want, obviously.
Yep, we give two options to opt out always for anything related to Alive and Well. Really thankful for their partnership and they also are partly grant funded, so it also keeps our rates down as well.
Are there any questions to the board? Are there any questions to the public or any comments? All right. Thank you, Kelly. Moving on to the 2025 MOU for Brightpoint.
Yes, so actually these next two are actually three special education, so go ahead. Mindy can talk about Brightpoint.
So the first one was Brightpoint, Head Start and Burn reached out to me last summer and with an MOU and it's just a contract. We, I think we've gotten two students from there that we've tested. So if it's in Burn, but if a student lives in the normal district, then it's our responsibility to evaluate that student. So it's just basically the MOU of our agreement of what we would be in charge of versus what they would be in charge of. That's all that is.
And that's for a student to go there, not for a student to come here?
If they, they're attending there, correct. So what, so they would be attending and then let's say that they do a screener and presently Adam and Wells, the co-op, will do the screeners. That's not, that's going to continue like they've been doing. And then let's say that there is a student that needs an evaluation and they would contact us and then we would do the evaluation. And then we would do our offer of faith of what we feel like the services would be. And then the student, like say it's speech services, then they could do like walk-in services with us here, if that's what it would look like, so.
Are there any questions to the board? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in regards to this agenda item? Okay, moving on to the MOU for Easter Seals.
That's a pre-EDS program, so I can't remember exactly how many years it's been here, but basically it's for our high school students that have IAPs and that Easter Seals provides a provider that comes in and they do job skill lessons, vocational skills with them. That's what it is, so we had it last year too.
And if you're not familiar with Easter Seals, I'd certainly recommend that you take a look at their organization because from not just within the schools, but adult assistance for individuals with disabilities, for job placement services and assistance. It's a really, really wonderful organization.
Do we already have an Easter Seals MOU for something different or?
It's the same one, but this is for this year.
I did not realize, man, time flies.
As I know.
I thought I just saw it, so.
Yeah.
My wife worked for them for a while.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah, they've been great. Because like this state determined who, what organization would go to every district and so we had Easter Seals and I think it's been great so far. Yeah. Yeah. Really good.
Any questions to the board? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in regards to this agenda item? Okay, moving on to action items.
Right, just asking for an authorization of notice for the second project hearing and preliminary determination hearing.
Before, I think it's important for the public to know, like even if something is not going to get passed or it's going to look different, it's important to have the conversations publicly. So I love the fact that we're having these discussions, like some of it goes over by head and I have to go do more research. Some of it is, you know, basic, but I think it's good for people to understand and hear and talk about. So I know it seems arduous, but it's really good for the public to take ownership of what's going on. So I appreciate everybody being here and with that I would, whatever motion to approve that.
I have a motion.
Oh, second?
I have a second. One clarifying question, we, there are still, just to make sure, we still have the opportunity to amend the process, the amount, all of those things. Does that happen before the next public hearing or as part of the next public hearing or is that, because I know there are three hearings that we have to do, correct?
Right, so I was, so I was thinking the same thing. So I think you have, right, you have the authorization or, but you would also have the actual bond that you're approving for, like the total amount of the project, so.
At the next one?
At the, I think it's, actually it is the next one because you have the project, because it has project authorization, project resolution. So I, that was a question I was going to ask you guys with this authorization of the notice, because again, the idea is to streamline the process. It's not, you would never approve a bond without everybody knowing it, but if you don't want to go use that mechanism and you want to just do a nice, just one bond.
Related bond, then we need to, you need to know that now before you publish the...
I don't know that we would need to, because you could, you could, we could bring that as a different recommendation to the, to the resolution, like we could, because it's a resolution that you would be approving.
So you, you could essentially, we could present the two different resolutions essentially or even?
Yeah, honestly, I think we could. How does that notice wind up? Do you have that? I can look at it here too.
It's for the maximum threshold for the September 9th meeting.
So we could approve anything less than that?
Right. And that will be decided upon at the next meeting on September 9th.
Okay.
If it's authorized tonight, but it's, you're not taking up, you're not making a decision on issuing bonds or voting on that tonight, consistent with what, I read with the statute with the preliminary determination hearing tonight and with what Jim referenced, so.
I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity for a discussion in regards to what level we want to issue. If, if we are not as a board comfortable going at the full 7.9, if we only want to do the two point whatever, or hey, we want to see some values associated with each of the requests, which I think you've done, you did that at the last meeting. If that's all we want to do, I think, I think we want some options.
I would agree. I think we can do that. Well, I'll have more conversation with Ice Miller and with Nick and I think, I think we can, I think we can bring options to it. Because again, it's a, it's a resolution, the project resolution, that's actually the action that's getting voted on, I mean, at that next meeting.
Yeah, I just don't want to make sure that we're moving forward on a process to approve 7.9 if that's not.
Agreed.
If we don't want to move forward on that.
Agreed. I agree with that, yeah.
I don't, I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are.
Because right now, all we're doing is authorizing the next notice. Like you don't have dollar amounts in that notice, correct?
Okay, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before we vote? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, right hand? All right, limited public comment. We are going to open up for limited public comment. Again, this is items specific to, that are impacting our district. We would ask that, again, very similar to that at a public hearing, that you please be, sign, have your name on the sign up sheet with your address. Please state your name and your address and you will be given five minutes to speak. Danielle Bennett? No? Good? All right. Patty Wyman? Want to speak? Oh, do you want to speak?
Oh, Polly.
Oh, Polly, okay, sorry, it looks like Patty. It's hard to tell.
Yes, I'm assuming, I'm, thanks Polly Wymer, 7515 North, 400 West, Montmorel. I'm assuming I can speak on anything that we're for tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I've seen the overall picture of being here at the board meetings, which we don't attend too much. We don't have children in school right now, we're grandparents instead. And I would agree with the gentleman that spoke before about the bond issues that we should number, with the country and the world being a credit card debt, spending beyond our means, the old fashioned way works much better and I think all of us know that. And along those lines, the bond issue is a money issue. It's not, you know, we need to be physically responsible. I also heard a comment that, if you will correct me on this, but was the rainy day fund at $400,000 and then now it's at $1,200,000?
It's, it's about 1.4, 1.5 million now.
Oh, okay, so it's not triple, but it's almost quadruple the rainy day fund. Yet, I've heard a lot of things on social media and in our neighborhoods and things, comments about a dissatisfaction with teachers, bus drivers, personnel from Northern Wild System about skipping and scraping. And I don't want it to happen that we're skipping and scraping on teachers, the safety of our children, the availability of bus systems for parents, and on keeping a good quality education system here in Northern Laos in order to scrape it into the rainy day fund, which seems excessive because today is the rainy day. These are the children, these are our children that we're concerned about and they're here today. I'm not sure what we need a rainy day fund for because I think that's the same thing that a bond is, right? Rainy day fund. Take this money and promise it to be used for something else besides what we should be addressing for today. So I'd like to cover, like the rain God gave us today, I'd like that rainy day fund to not be preparing for what, some catastrophe that happens. I'm not sure what that is, but that seems like a large rainy day fund when we're losing seasoned teachers. We're losing seasoned personnel and we're losing seasoned bus drivers. And as a grandparents, I'm concerned about the fact that when you're hiring new teachers, yes, they need to have, show, go use the ropes, whatever that phrase is, and new bus drivers, but we've seen a lot of accidents in the news with buses. We've seen a lot of things happening when you talk about bringing in an aide that's working at the school and putting them on the bus, then that seems like you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I've heard, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I've heard that from what you explained in that, so you're trying to make up for bus driver pay or teacher pay or whatever it is by throwing them a bone and putting them into, giving them something else, by, but taking away things like insurance and these kind of things. I think that's why the dissatisfaction is present right now. So we need to deal with what's going on today instead of that rainy day fund or excessive bond issuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, hearing done. Upcoming calendar dates.
Yeah, so right now on the calendar, September 9th, the budget hearing, point three, and then the second preliminary determination hearing for the 2025 GeoBond. And then 15th to 16th is ISBA, IAPSS Fall Conference, and I don't know, do we have everyone attending or?
I'm.
Okay, so do we have, do you need, is this something where you need us to be registering?
I'll let you know, I need to talk to them.
Okay, okay. All right.
All right, any other comments? Any other comments from the board? Nope. Just one. My abortion return. Thank you.